Where's Ken Bowman? Ken over.
That's Ken right there.
Hey Ken, Kayla, you ready? Listen, we're locked in. Hey Kayla, you ready? You ready?
Go on.
I'm gonna get out of here as well. No, I'm gonna get him in there. Everybody ready?
Yep.
Let's do it. Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call the order. The Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting on Tuesday, September 17th, 2024 at 7:00 PM in the Board Meeting Room at 39 Bank Street, Southeast Chatham, Virginia. Ms. McCluster, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Mr. Dudley.
Present.
Mr. Height.
Here.
Mr. Ingram.
Here.
Mr. Whittle.
Here.
Mr. Tucker.
Here.
Mr. Dalton.
Here.
Moving to item three, which is a moment of silence that we do, and then our Pledge of Allegiance, we're gonna do a little different tonight. We have the Boy Scouts here, and we're gonna have them come up to the front for our Pledge of Allegiance, and tonight, we want to welcome the members of the Blue Ridge Council of the Boy Scouts of America, whom will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States. We have members of the Troop 374, Troop 300, and Troop 372, along with the Scout leadership, Herschel Stone, President of the Council, and Steve Atkins, Vice President. So if you all would come to the front and lead us in the, we'll stand for a moment of silence.
Yep.
And then we'll have y'all lead us in their Pledge of Allegiance. All right, gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's give them a hand. How about that?
Thank y'all. Yeah.
All right, moving to item five. Agenda items to be added. Are there any items to be added to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to add the Health Department funding request to the consent agenda as item 7L.
7F, all right.
L.
L?
As in Larry.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Tucker to add an item.
I'll second it.
And we have a second by Mr. Dudley. Any further discussion? If none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving to item six. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ingram and second by Mr. Bowman. Any further discussion? None, we're ready to vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving to item seven. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Ms. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda that is in front of us that has been presented this evening. Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Dudley. Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Height. Any further discussion? If none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving to item eight. Our presentations. Do we need to move to the front, gentlemen? We have, okay.
Yes.
Move to the front for our presentation.
This is a great night. It's good to see all of these scouts here tonight, and to see this auditorium almost filled up. So what we're gonna do tonight is make a presentation. I went to the Blue Ridge Council of the Boy Scouts here recently, their annual meeting, and young man, Jackson Weddington, was honored at that particular meeting, and we're gonna honor him tonight with a certificate from the Board of Supervisors. So if Jackson will come forward, and his mom and dad, Bobby and Amanda, if y'all will come forward, please. They reside in the Westover District, and you can stand right over here to my right, if you will, and we're gonna move this out of the way so we can get photos in just a minute. So Jackson's with Troop 374. I'm gonna read the certificate and how he was recognized during the annual meeting. So in July 2023, Jackson and two of his buddies, Jaden Hall and Ryan Allen, were fishing at English Park on the Stanton River during a birthday party. They heard two girls who were caught in the current yell for help. Since Ryan was only 13, Jackson and Jaden told them to stay on the bank, and the two of them went to the girls. Jackson got one girl back to the shore, and when he looked, Jaden, who had tired from fighting the current, was in trouble himself. Jackson went to them, got the other girl that Jaden was trying to save, and pulled her to a safe spot near the riverbank. Jackson performed two surface dives to reach Jaden, who was underwater, and managed to get him to the shore, but he was unresponsive. Jackson started CPR until a nurse, who was, who happened to be at the park, took over. Jackson then went toward the parking lot to help single the first aid responders. Jaden was revived and transported to the hospital where he recovered. Both girls were treated by EMS personnel. Jackson Weddington showed calmness under pressure in the underwater rescue of his friends, demonstrating unusual heroism and extraordinary skill, saving the lives of three young people at extreme risk to himself, given the nature of the flowing river. Jackson has been awarded the National Honor Medal and was recently recognized at the annual Blue Ridge Council Fens, Furs, and Feathers event held at Atkinson Farms. Jackson, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, congratulations. I'm not gonna bring anybody down. I just wanted to recognize a group that is here tonight, and it's part of their class. It's a 12th grade AP Government class. The teacher is Patrick Tuert, and the young lady that needed to interview was Mrs. Parker Sinclair. I'm gonna ask this class if they will to stand. This is a government class. Let's give them a hand this evening for being here. Thank you all so much for coming. Anything that we can do for the children, that's a big deal for us. Thank you. What's go? I don't even know. Tons? That's it? All right. Thank you, Tim. I'll tell you what, it makes me feel good. I used to go into the high schools and see the ROTC students in there, and that gives you a great sense of pride, seeing these young folks here, preparing themselves for life, you know, growing up into adulthood. I'll tell you what, it makes me feel good, too, because there are some good people in this world, and these folks right here, we're gonna, and I appreciate the Scout leaders for nurturing them, for leading them, for developing them into the citizens they're gonna be. So thank you so much for doing that. So with that being said, I want to move to the next one here, and this'll be a lot of fun. This is, right here, I have in front here are some of our folks from the Beautification Committee. I want to call them forward, if you will, please, and they'll introduce themselves and state the district they represent, and they will speak about the fall cleanup schedule for the week of Monday, September 30 through Saturday, October the 5th.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Phyllis Barker. I proudly represent the Dan River District, and our designating the meeting spot for this event will be at Ringel Volunteer Fire Department, which is located at 3880 Tom Fork Road. Do we have anyone in the audience that is from the Dan River District? Raise your hand, please. Great, you can help me spread the word. We want to get this out. It is a very important event we're hoping everyone will become involved in. We will let you know that if it rains on Saturday, October 5th, that it will be canceled, but we have the week of September 30th through October 5th that you can do bag-a-day. And I feel like someone else can explain all of that, but I have some paperwork, and if you are interested, I'd be happy to pass it off to you. But we really want to encourage everyone to please come out and participate for this important event. In saying that, I'd like to ask Eddie Height to please come forward. Eddie, we are hereby challenging not only our district, but our Board of Supervisors to be participating in the cleanup event this week, that particular week. So we don't want to be trashy. Don't be trashy, be classy.
Hello. My name is Evelyn Davis. I'm here representing the Bannister District. Robert Tucker is our supervisor. And also, if anyone here is from the Bannister District, I have bags, I have the vests, and I have the pickups, the pickup sticks in my car. So if you're willing to meet me at my car after event. Also, on the day of cleanup, our event will take place at the Gretna Fire Department. Also, I would like Reverend, I mean, Robert Tucker.
Say Reverend.
Pastor Tucker. We're so proud of you. I'd like to present to Judy Bitts. I'm sorry I can't get any more, but that's another nice vest, and you told us I'd give you a vest tonight. Yeah, surprise for you. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Sherry Moss, and I'm representing the Cowlands Gretna District, and I am thrilled to get our county clean. So we're gonna meet October the 5th, that morning at 9:00, at the Gretna Fire Department. So come on out so you can get your vest and, for safety, and your bags, and participate. And I would also like to ask my friend, neighbor, and my Board of Supervisor representative to participate. Mr. Dalton. Thank you. And on behalf of Judy Simpson that could not be here this evening, she is representing the Hurt District, and she has asked me to make sure that Mr. Dudley knows he's loved, and that we would like him to participate, and they're gonna meet at the Hurt Office... The Hurt Office Complex.
Good evening, and I'm Catherine Blair. I represent the Westover District, and our event will meet together at Walker Restaurant, and where you can pick up your vest and your bags and your grabbers, and then you can go out wherever you choose to work and pick up trash, and then report back, and I'll give you a certificate of participation, and those of you who need credit hours at school, this is a good time to get them, volunteer hours. And also want to give a vest to Mr. Whittle. And then Carolyn Herndon, who represents the Tunsil District, couldn't be here, so I brought a vest for Vic Ingram, so he can come, too.
Hi, everyone. I'm Brenda Bowman, and I'm the proxy tonight for Wendy Shields, who represents the Chatham Blairs District. And the pickup and final turn-in with your reports and bags and vests, et cetera, that day will be at the Mount Herman Fire Department on Route 41. And as Wendy's proxy, I have a vest for the Chatham Blair Supervisor, Mr. Ken Bowman.
They ain't gonna take your plate.
I know. She back up town. Every time they do.
We got one for each hand.
Moving to item nine, Hearing of the Citizens. Each person addressing the board under Hearing of the Citizens shall be a resident or land owner of the county, and/or the resident agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district an audible tone of voice for the record. Nonetheless, further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during the Hearing of the Citizens. All remarks should be addressed to the board as a body, excuse me, and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the Citizens shall last for a maximum 45 minutes. Any individual that has signed up to speak due in said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. Absent chairman approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Ms. McCluster, we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. Vanessa Scares.
Welcome, ma'am.
Good evening.
Yes, indeed.
My name is Vanessa Scares, and I live in the Westover District. Happy Constitution Day. On September 17th, 1787, the delegates to the Constitutional Convention met for the last time to sign the document that they had created. We are forever indebted to our founding fathers for the blessings of freedom that they secured for us. We should show special gratitude to the Virginians who signed the Constitution. They were John Blair, Thomas Jefferson, James Madison, and George Washington. They were part of a group of 39 brave men that formed and signed the United States Constitution. They recognized that all that are born in the United States or by naturalization had become citizens of this great country that we call home. In 2004, Public Law 108-447, Section 111, was passed. It requires that each educational institution that receives federal funds for a fiscal year should hold an educational program on the United States Constitution on September 17th of such year, and the student, specifically for the student served by that educational institution. And each federal agency or department shall provide educational training materials concerning the United States Constitution to each employee on September 17th of each year. I will close by quoting George Washington, who said, I quote, "A primary object should be the education of our youth in the science of government."
it's, um, he gave me the case to take care of it. In case R-24-015, I make a motion approving the rezoning of a total of 13.69 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for agricultural uses on the property. Ms. Chairman, that is my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley.
Second.
A second. Got a second by Mr. Tucker. Any further discussion? Not hearing any, we ready to vote?
Mr. Ingram.
Yes.
All right, motion carries unanimous. Mr. Durham, your property is being rezoned. Moving to case R-24-013, Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-24-013, Erin Tooley, has petitioned to rezone 3.85 acres located on State Road 992, Homestead Trail, in the Dan River election district from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for private recreational facility event venue. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. On July 2, 2023, the Planning Commission recommended by a 6 to 0 vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted with the conditions submitted by the applicant. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Erin Tooley is here to represent the petition.
Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale. At 7:29, I'll open the public hearing in case R-24-013. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir. Lorraine Goyle.
Thank y'all for listening to me. My son couldn't be here, and his wife couldn't be here, so I'm representing him. They have a daughter that is handicapped, and she goes to bed at 8 o'clock at night. She is totally not mobile, not speaking, but loud noises, and they're so afraid that with all this event going on, and it would be right across the road, they're getting ready to build over there. And they're so concerned that it's gonna interrupt her sleeping. She sleeps during the day, and she sleeps at night. She just had surgery, so they could not be here. And I would like to show y'all a picture of her, so y'all would know what she looks like, if I can make.
Yes, ma'am.
time because with her conditions and everything. So they're supposed to start in about a month. And I would hate to think that they're moving, and this interrupts her daily, daily routines. And if they're, I mean, if it's loud talking, or music.
30 seconds remaining. 30 seconds remaining.
And thank y'all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Deborah Dockery.
My name is Deborah Dockery, and I reside at 692 Homestead Trails, Ringo. When my husband and I purchased our land on a quiet dead-end road almost 40 years ago, I never thought that four times in the last six months, we would be driving back and forth to Chatham to preserve our little neighborhood. But here we are again. As you've heard Lorraine say, you know, we're all concerned. And I guess it really doesn't matter how many times that I speak about the dangers on a half a mile, 25-zone road, with the potential of 75 visitors traveling the road during busy bus drop-off times, and until 10 o'clock at night. But let me give you a different scenario on this situation. 30 years ago, I went into business like many of my other neighbors. So yes, I do understand about economic development in its rightful place. People would ask me when I went into business, why didn't I work out of my home? And I would say, "Do you want to live beside a tax office? I won't have more than 75 people there at a time. I won't have music amplified after 10 o'clock. I won't have alcohol, and I won't have hoodlums in and out, as you've called before." My son also is an entrepreneur. He is a musician, and was voted Local Band of the Year last year. You don't hear him play it. No, he's playing in a venue in town that's zoned to play in, not in a neighborhood. And let me tell you one difference between me, our residents, and the Tooleys. I grew up on Homestead Trails. I played across the street from the Tooleys. I raised my family on Homestead Trails. Our kids grew up together, they ran up and down the roads, they rode their bikes, they played, they had a good time. We all grew up together. I was hoping.
30 seconds remaining.
That our kids would also get to do this. But these neighbors here behind me, they're not just my neighbors, they're my family. And they are concerned about what's gonna happen to our neighborhood. We've worked hard to preserve it, and I'm just praying that our dream of having a quiet neighborhood is not gonna turn into a nightmare. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Three minutes is complete. Daniel Gussler.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Daniel Gussler, I live right beside the Tooleys. I originally came here with a much different speech prepared. After attending the tea party, this has drastically changed. With expectation of meeting and having conversation with the Tooleys and a few neighbors, I was greeted by something different. I was greeted by some of their family friends. I was greeted by a reporter, a photographer, and a member of the board. I instantly felt victimized and bewildered at this. I felt used. I felt as though the small handful of people who actually live on this road were treated as pawns. It was very apparent that this was not a gathering of good gesture amongst neighbors, but instead an opportunity at gaining interest and support at a publicity event in hopes of change of heart and mind, perhaps by the homeowners, or perhaps the board. In conversation with two others in attendance, they felt the same way. I did have some conversation with Mr. Tooley, and discovered that he is a good man. He is supporting his wife, and he is raising a fine group of young men. I expressed my concerns, especially with anything beyond tea parties and anything with large amounts of guests. With that being said, I still have legitimate concern with the nuisances that an event center could bring to this neighborhood. As a matter of fact, just three days after the last board meeting, I was greeted with the displeasure of six trespassers on my driveway in my front yard. Two photographers taking pictures of a young family, all guests of the Tooleys. The only issue, they were unwanted guests for me. They were politely asked to leave my property, and were notified of the trespassing, to which the response was, "I didn't know. I thought the driveway was the property line." I've got plenty of pictures. I've even brought one here tonight to share with you guys. I've got video as well. I've even got some witnesses that are here tonight. So now we're trespassing, got unwanted attention, unwanted photography, unwanted events, all before permitting, all before use, all before proper procedure. Even unknown violation is negligence. But let's also not forget what has been omitted from conversation at these meetings.
30 seconds remaining.
While we are.
30 seconds remaining.
By their own admission, the Tooleys have other type of events on their radar as well, including bridal shower, graduation, and long-term goal weddings. All these events create their own unique challenges. None of those are well-suited for a quiet neighborhood on a dead-end street in Ringo. Long-term goal includes renovation and use of the old barn on the property as an event space, which is again 30 feet from my property, which also violates county code.
Three minutes is complete.
135182. Thank you, board. I'd like to share this picture, if you don't mind.
That's fine, sir. Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else signed up, Ms. McCluster?
Alice Strater.
Thank you. I'm not a public speaker, so I appreciate the opportunity to be able to voice my opinion tonight. I hope I stay standing. I own the property that is directly on the other side of the Toonies from Daniel. I have 11 acres back there. My driveway pretty much is narrow going by the front of the property, and then I have 11 total acres that extends beyond the property in the back. Personal and job commitments prevent me from coming to the first two meetings. I am all for somebody starting a business. I like the idea of tea parties, I think that's wonderful. But having a tea party of 20 to 25 people on a front porch is entirely different from what I hear that they're asking for, and what may end up coming down the road if it is the zoning has changed. I grew up in the neighborhood, quiet. I ask anybody, "Do y'all want to be beside an event center with 100 people to 10 o'clock at night?", not knowing what kind of people will be showing up, and I assume that we would not have any issues, but as you know, in this day and time, you never know. That is our home. It has been peaceful for 40 years, and I'd like to see it stay peaceful. In your own words, you are, have been, you are, need to show the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. And as my mom voiced at the last meeting, it's not so much what today's plans are, it's once the zoning has changed, what could be done. We have a small neighborhood, a dead-end road, one mile long. You've got 100 people, how many cars are you gonna have coming in and out of that? Where are they gonna park? When they have an event, they gotta have space for the event, then you gotta have space for up to 100 cars, and then you're gonna have 100 cars coming up and down where they live is not even a half a mile, it's a half a mile. So you have all these families with children, neighbors that is quiet, and then, like I said, my concern is, is not the 20 to 25 people on the front porch for a tea party, but what will happen in the future. And as a landowner, that I'm not living on that land, as the Gussler did, and already have had it, trespassers on his land, I don't want to have to build a fence to protect my property, should this go through and events get larger.
30 seconds remaining.
But I would just like y'all to take that into consideration, please. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. At 7:43, I'll close the case, close the public hearing in case R-24-013. Mr. Height, the pleasure is yours.
In case R-24-013, with the included proffers, I make a motion approving the rezoning of 3.85 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow private recreational facility event space to be operated on the property.
I'll second that motion.
We've got a motion by Mr. Height, and a second by Mr. Dudley. Any further discussion? Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. Or Mr. Ingram?
If Emily could come back and share some of the proffers, I'd appreciate that.
You read the proffers.
Would you like to see them, or would you like for me to just read them out loud?
Two pages, I think.
It's quite a few.
Yeah, go ahead and hit the highlights, I guess, if you would.
So I, Erin Tooley, hereby voluntarily proffer to the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors the following for the above referenced property. There shall be no events after 10:00 PM. There shall be no alcohol permitted at events held on the property. All structures used for events shall comply with the Virginia Statewide Fire Prevention Code and Uniform Statewide Building Code. All parking will be contained within the parking areas identified on the site plan submitted with the rezoning application. Events will be limited to a maximum of 75 people. All events shall comply with the Pennsylvania County Noise Ordinance. And then we will not use the property for any of the following uses permitted in the A- Not knowing what kind of people will be showing up, and I assume that we would not have any issues, but as you know, in this day and time, you never know. That is our home. It has been peaceful for forty years, and I'd like to see it stay peaceful. In your own words, you are, have been, you are, need to show the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. And as my mom voiced at the last meeting, it's not so much what today's plans are, it's once the zoning has changed, what could be done. We have a small neighborhood, a dead-end road, one mile long. You've got a hundred people. How many cars are you going to have coming in and out of that? Where are they going to park? When they have an event, they've got to have space for the event. Then you've got to have space for up to a hundred cars. And then you're going to have a hundred cars coming up and down where they live is not even a half a mile. It's a half a mile. So you have all these families with children, neighbors that is quiet. And then, like I said, my concern is, is not the twenty to twenty-five people on the front porch for a tea party, but what will happen in the future. And as a landowner, that I'm not living on that land, as the Gussler did, and already have had it, trespassers on his land, I don't want to have to build a fence to protect my property should this go through and events get larger.
Thirty seconds remaining.
But I would just like y'all to take that into consideration, please. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. At seven forty-three, I'll close the case, close the public hearing in case R-24-013. Mr. Height, the pleasure is yours.
In case R-24-013, with the included proffers, I make a motion approving the rezoning of 3.85 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow private recreational facility event space to be operated on property.
I'll second that motion.
We've got a motion by Mr. Height and a second by Mr. Dudley. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Well, go ahead. Mr. Ingram.
If Emily could come back and share some of the proffers, I'd appreciate that.
You read the proffers.
Would you like to see them or would you like for me just read them out loud?
Two pages, I think.
It's quite a few.
Yeah, go ahead and hit the highlights, I guess, if you would.
Okay. So I, Aaron Tooly, hereby voluntarily proffer to the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors the following for the above referenced property. There shall be no events after ten PM. There shall be no alcohol permitted at events held on the property. All structures used for events shall comply with the Virginia statewide fire prevention code and uniform statewide building code. All parking will be contained within the parking areas identified on the site plan submitted with the rezoning application. Events will be limited to a maximum of seventy-five people. All events shall comply with the Pennsylvania County Noise Ordinance. And then we will not use the property for any of the following uses permitted on, in the A1 agricultural district. That list is quite extensive, so I do not think you all want me to read that, but basically anything that could be negatively impactful to adjacent property owners, such as they got rid of archery ranges, automobile graveyard, carnivals, golf courses, grain mills, kennels, mining, public garage, sawmills, storage yards, substations, utilities, pulpwood storage, slaughterhouses, et cetera. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale.
Emily, I got a question. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I have been noticing on several of the cases, it says, "Recommended by a six-zero vote." Why is it six-zero?
We would have had someone absent.
Somebody absent. I've seen it several times, I'm just wondering. Okay, because I know it's seven districts.
Yes, so if it's six, that's because someone was absent at that meeting.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Emily. I'm sorry.
Mr. Tucker, do you have some, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to share that I attended the tea party that the Toolys put together. I thought it was a very wonderful event. I got a totally different vibe than what I've heard described, and just a bit of levity. I think I told Ms. Tooly that the only thing I would recommend would be to allow the men to use regular-sized cups. Those teacups are so dainty. Men have these big knuckles. We don't really have the capacity to fit those things. But I enjoyed the experience, and again, I think, you know, that's a piece of culture that, you know, it's acceptable, and I think it's very delightful in Pennsylvania County. And for that reason, I'm going to support the motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank the board for allowing the Toolys to take the time to set up their tea party and giving them an extra month and moving this to the September agenda. I think it gives us an opportunity, and unfortunately, I couldn't make it. I signed up for it, but I couldn't make it. But in the future, I plan on attending. But I think this gave us an opportunity to digest this a little bit more. And I've looked, you know, at this. It's given the people an opportunity to speak. But again, I look at this and I will go with Mr. Height's recommendation.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Any further discussion? Not hearing any? We ready to vote.
Mr. Tucker.
Motion passed as unanimous. Ms. Tooly, your property is being rezoned. Moving to our other public hearings. Each person addressing the board under a public hearing shall step up, give his or her name, district, and his or her place of residence for a non-resident citizen in an autotonal voice for the record. Unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her time to three minutes. Speakers for a group will be limited to ten minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at the time unless the consent of the board is affirmatively given to extend the speakers allotted time. Absent chairman approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. This is going to be item one of FY-225 county budget adjustments. Ms. Vanderheide.
Yes, I'm here tonight to explain a little bit about why I'm here before you. These are amendments to your FY-2025 budget. We do this each September. A lot of times, we don't know all the information there is to know when we pass our budget in May or early April for us to get bills out by May. So many times, we do have to bring these back to you all. Tonight's public hearing is being held because those adjustments exceed one percent of the budget that you all adopted in April. So after advertising this for the, twice a week, amount that is required by the Code of Virginia, we are ready to have that public hearing tonight. And these amendments total forty million eight hundred nineteen thousand eight fifty-seven oh nine. There is a transfer amount that's included in here of fifteen million dollars, and the majority of this increase are for school carryovers and additional revenues from the state and federal government for our schools. So with that, after you all hear, the public citizens on the public hearing, you will be able to vote for these amendments, and they will be effective immediately.
Thank you, Ms. Vanderheide.
No motion needed, correct?
No. We need a motion.
Not to. Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Let me open the public hearing.
Okay, good.
At seven fifty, I'll open up the public hearing. Ms. McLaughlin, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir. Frank Fox.
Welcome, sir.
Chairman Dalton, members of the board. Frank Fox, from Chatham Blair's District. I rise in support of this motion. Would just like to point out a couple of things for the taxpayers that because of the one percent, this is going to be a good ground for the next county administrator. First of all, the adjustments for the school were set at the conservative figure, so the six-point-three million dollars that is in this proposal is basically on state money that ended up being over and above, but did not require an additional match from the county. So that's great news. The beautification, there's a carryover of seventy-four thousand dollars. So the revenue from the welcome signs has exceeded the expenses so far, and now that we have an active committee, then there's plenty of room there for things that they wanted to. The grant fund for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, we need to thank Delegate Marshall for bringing that to the attention, and for the people on the library staff for writing that grant, which ended up being for the Chatham, I mean, for the Gretna Library, which has been ongoing. So that's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars that did not fall on the taxpayers. And then finally, thank the staff for the return of thirty-one thousand dollars in the capital improvements refund of equipment that was deemed not necessary after it was bought. So thank you, and I do support Ms. Vanderheide's move.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else signed up?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
At seven fifty-three, I'll close the public hearing for the Y-2025 county budget adjustments.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Tucker.
Make a motion approving the FY-2025 budget amendments totaling forty million eight hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and nine pennies, as presented.
Second. We've got a motion by Mr. Tucker, a second by Mr. Ingram. Any further discussion? If none, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Height?
All right, motion carries unanimously. Moving to item eleven. Do we have any unfinished business? Any new business?
No, sir.
Any matters from our work session?
No, sir. The Virginia Department of Health thing was put on the consent agenda.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Board members reports. Mr. Height, we'll start with you, sir.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. During our work session, we discussed, and it was voted on in the consent agenda to have a pilot program for the after-school daycare at Kentuck starting in January. And I think that is a great opportunity for the county to offer services for our citizens. And I really feel like hopefully this is going to take off and spread countywide, you know, to help our folks with after-school care, which is a dire need. I know as a former parent of a child that grew up in our county schools, that would have been a great thing to have, so, you know, you wouldn't have to juggle schedules and all. So I'm looking forward to that program starting in January. And just once again, thank everyone for coming out tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Height. Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say a couple of things here. Today is National Voter Registration Day. Make sure that you get the word out and people can start early in-person voting on Friday the twentieth. That's critically important. Also, thank all of the staff for putting all the agenda items together and also making us look very, very good here. I appreciate all of the people coming out from the community to listen to and to support your local governance. And, you know, I have to say this, you know, from where we sit, we cannot make everybody happy. All we can hope to do is kind of collaborate and find that sweet spot or happy medium in there so that we can make improvements for the total community. So again, thank you all, Mr. Chairman. Very good meeting tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dudley?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate everybody coming out. Thank the staff for putting the meeting together, doing all of the legwork and the due diligence just to make this happen. Thank the folks for coming out. Good to see the Boy Scouts with us. One of them's yawning right there on the second row. They ready to go to house, and I don't blame them. So glad, when I heard them start leaving in the Pledge of Allegiance, it just about gives you cold chills just to hear the boys do that. So I really appreciate that. Thank you so much. That's right. And also for the class from Mr. Ingram's District, Tunstall High School. Some of them's back there smiling, some of them's ready to go home, too. But did y'all have a good time tonight? Good, good. Thank you guys so much. And Parker, if you need anything else from me, just feel free to text me or call me anything you can. But thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Ms. Ingram, do you have anything, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few days ago, our community lost yet another young soul to suicide. And Ann Landers probably said it best when she said, "Suicide is a permanent solution to a temporary problem." And so do remember that if you have any thoughts of suicidal tendencies, or if you know somebody that does, there's so many people standing in the wings willing to help you. And I'm one of those people. So do remember the family and friends of the lost ones, and there's several. On a bright note, Cruz Construction in my district celebrates fifty years of business. They have slung a whole lot of asphalt in fifty years. And we were going to do a presentation tonight, but I was trying to coordinate it with Delegate Eric Phillips' office, and the General Assembly is not in session. So we're going to table that until next month. But I did want to congratulate Cruz Construction on fifty years of service. Peyton Sellers won his seventh late model championship at South Austin Speedway, something that we're all very proud of. Him, his daddy Bert, and brother H.C., the crew chief, they did a fabulous job. And this seventh championship ties the record. So hopefully, it'll be number eight next year. And also, Mr. Dudley, this is payback to you. Jason Myers, who lives in the Hurt District, won the Limited Sportsman Truck Championship at South Boston. But also, I do want to congratulate the Boy Scouts and thank them for coming. They did a great job. And to this wonderful club from Tunstall High School. As I told you, I'm a seventy-five graduate, but I wasn't in any of the clubs. But we appreciate you being here. Anything we can do to help you, let us know. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram. Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Whittle said I could have two minutes if it's time. First of all, thank you to everyone that came out tonight, especially the Boy Scouts. I know it was tough wrangling all those guys together and girls together, but it was great seeing them tonight. That was super impressive, and I really enjoyed it. Earlier in, well, latter part of August, I attended the Mass Casualty Training Exercise that was conducted over at Unique Industries. That was an outstanding event. There were great participation from the Fire EMS throughout the county, the local sheriff's office, FBI, VDOT, and other sporting agencies. The scenario was realistic and provided everyone with the opportunity to hone their skills and be prepared if they were ever faced with a real-world situation. And folks, the way the world is today, you can never be not prepared. And I'll tell you what, it was great to see those folks over there go through that exercise. And I'm very proud of this and the way they conducted themselves during that event. Excuse me. Attended the West Piedmont Planning District Meeting in Martinsville. Attended the Blue Ridge Mountain Council Boy Scouts of America Annual Meeting on August the twenty-seventh. Congratulations. We've already recognized the young man here tonight, but Mr. Dave Bennett, he's the Vice President of Operations with Entertain Polymer. He received the award for outstanding community service from that council. So that was great to see him receive that. Attended the RIFA Meeting September the ninth. Had the honor of meeting with Governor Glenn Youngkin, several statewide candidates who visited Pennsylvania County on September the ninth. Attended the nine-eleven ceremony at Dan River Middle School. And folks, if you haven't been to one of those, you need to put it on your calendar for next year. They packed the auditorium. They did an outstanding job there honoring those folks that were lost during nine-eleven. Attended the public review of the draft of Chatham Growth and Renewal Plan as part of the reimagined Chatham Program that was held at ODAC, excuse me, on September eleventh. And that was well-attended. I was glad to see that. The contractor that, or consultant that's doing that was there to brief the folks in attendance, and I think they're on the right track for making sure that Chatham is headed in the right direction. Attended a roundtable with Senator Mark Warner, as some of the folks at this die did, who visited Danville's River Falls to discuss housing in our region. And as a reminder, since you did see all the cleanup folks here tonight, and I'm thankful for them stepping forward and volunteering, that will be held, again, just as a reminder, on October the fifth from nine AM to noon. So in addition to the cleanup on Saturday, the citizens can take the large items such as building materials, tires, tree limbs, paints, oils to the landfill that week from Monday, September thirtieth through Friday, October the fourth. These folks that were here tonight, they have their vests, they have the bags, they have the pickers, they've got all that. And just as a reminder, for Bannister, it's in Gretna Volunteer Fire Department; Callens Gretna, it's in Gretna Volunteer Fire Department; Chatham Blair's is Mount Herman Volunteer Fire Department; Dan River, Ringel Volunteer Fire Department; Stanton Rivers at the Hurt Office Building; Tunstall is Brazzville United Methodist Church; and Westover is Walker's Restaurant. So appreciate all those folks there. Turn out, help them. You don't have to wait for them to call you. Go on the county's website. You can see those folks, see their names, their phone numbers, contact information. Sign up, and let's get Pennsylvania County cleaned up, okay? That's all I've got. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Mr. Whittle?
Thank you. Look, I appreciate everybody coming out. Thanks for the class from Tunstall coming out, the beautification committee, putting us to work, I mean, helping us get the county cleaned up. And just thank everybody for coming out and spending time with us. Y'all have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whittle. Clearly, Mr. Bowman takes all my time. I don't have nothing left to even thank nobody for. He does a great job. Thank you, Mr. Bowman. No, good meeting. Thank everybody, all the board members.
Yes, sir.
Had a good crowd out tonight. Thank everybody for coming out. Want to thank all the Boy Scouts and different troops that come out to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Great job on that. Had the opportunity to attend the Cool Branch Fire and Rescue. They had their giveaway for their twenty thousand dollars this year. Attended that. And also this coming weekend, on Saturday the twenty-first, the Climax Ruining Club's got the Sawgum Festival. So if you want to go out and enjoy some good fellowship and meet some great people, that's this Saturday. So, and with that, and again, thank everyone, all the staff, and again, everybody for coming out, and have a safe trip home. Mr. Short, do you have anything, sir?
Just a reminder, the county fair goes through this Saturday at the county fairgrounds. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Hunt, do you have anything?
No, but it was a very good and positive meeting tonight, I thought.
Thank you, sir. All right, at eight oh four, I'll adjourn the meeting.